Good evening. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Present.
Councilmember Gilbert. Just stepped away for a moment. Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Weselak.
Here.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Landman, can you just check your mic one more time for me? Okay. 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 We're there. Okay.
Operator error.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all so much. Tonight. In terms of the agenda, we will have a proclamation in recognition of B.B. Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. We will also have a presentation on the library and community center project update, followed by two voting sessions, single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for library solar panels, as well as a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of contracts with Cigna for employee health and dental insurance. And we will jump in with our proclamation. In national, in recognition of B.B. Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month, July 2025. Whereas B.B. Moore Campbell is an accomplished African-American author and journalist, advocate, co-founder of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMNI, urban Los Angeles, and national spokesperson for mental health education and support among individuals with mental illness and their families. And whereas she was recognized for her tireless advocacy for bringing awareness and attention to mental illness among minorities, and for her belief in the power of community storytelling and healing through conversation with the release of her New York Times bestselling novel, 72-Hour Hold, and her children's book, Sometimes My Mommy Gets Angry. And whereas in 2008, the U.S. House of Representatives designated July as B.B. Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month in her honor to enhance public awareness of mental illness, especially within minority communities. And whereas mental health conditions do not discriminate based on race, color, or gender, however, a person's culture and identity can make access to mental health treatment much more difficult. And whereas, according to the Office of Minority and National Affairs for the American Psychiatric Association, approximately two-thirds of all people with a diagnosable mental illness do not seek treatment due to stigma, lack of mental, lack of community-based resources, inadequate diagnoses, or no diagnosis. And whereas the month of July is a time to amplify NAMNI's message, breaking stigma and building bridges one conversation at a time, and to use this time to embrace every voice, every story, and every journey to foster healing, connection, and community. Therefore, I, Talisha Circe, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, proclaim July 2025 as B.B. Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month, and recognize her dedication and commitment to influence communities to support mental wellness through effective treatment options, open access treatment and services, and improve community outreach and support for our family and community members. And so with that, we're going to move to public comments on voting items. Voting items this evening, oh, I'm sorry, I should go through the schedule.
Thank you.
Totally forgot. So on Wednesday, on Friday is July the 4th. Independence Day, city offices and facilities are closed Friday and Saturday for the Independence Day holiday. On Wednesday, July the 9th, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. And we will be discussing, just, just want to confirm, I will confirm this later, there may be another agenda item. Public Safety Task Force Recommendations Follow-Up. On Wednesday, July the 16th, is a tentative slated administrative function session for the city manager's evaluation. On Wednesday, July the 16th, the council will start at its regular time of 7:30. We will have three work sessions that evening. The first is FY26 Budget Amendment Number 1. The second is a Public Safety Task Force Recommendations Follow-Up. The third is Board and Committee Appointment Recommendations. On Wednesday, July the 23rd, it's a tentative city council administrative function session. Again, that's for the city manager's evaluation. And on Wednesday, July the 23rd, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will have two presentations that evening. The first is the Piney Branch Elementary School Feasibility Study, where MCPS will be joining us. The second is the Washington Advantis Hospital Site Fencing and Demolition, where Advantis Health will be joining us. We will have two voting sessions. The first is the First Reading Ordinance Approving FY26 Budget Amendment Number 1. The second is Resolutions Providing for Appointments to Boards and Committees. We will then have two work sessions. The first is the Piney Branch Elementary School Feasibility Study Preferred Option, where we work on a resolution. The second is the tentative discussion of the Public Safety Task Force Council Actions. On Wednesday, July the 30th, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will start with a presentation, the quarterly financial report for Q4. And then we will have three voting items. The first is the Second Reading Ordinance Approving the FY26 Budget Amendment Number 1. Also tentative is the resolution designating a preferred option for Piney Branch Elementary School. And then the last is a resolution providing for the city council's summer recess. We will then be on summer recess. And so with that, we will move to our public comments on voting items. Do we have any public comments on voting items? The first item is a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for library solar panels, and a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of contracts with Cigna for employee health and dental insurance. Do we have any public comments?
Do we have any virtual comments?
Okay. We're going to move to general public comments. Do we have any general public comments this evening?
Hello, my name is Karen Elrich from Ward 5. And I came to the last council meeting where I asked you to embrace your duty to lead on a major policy review of our rent stabilization law, which has been critical in promoting our community's most treasured values. It has helped us preserve a dense stock of deeply affordable housing. It has provided decades of stability and freedom from fear of displacement for thousands of local families. It has been key to protecting our community's economic and racial diversity. All of these good outcomes, in turn, have supported the security, inclusivity, and well-being of all of us in our community. And I officially requested, and I did submit in writing, that the council schedule a work session to determine what the council goals are for the review of this law. And also that the council schedule follow-up voting to both approve these goals and approve the final draft of the request for proposals for the related study. I make these requests under Title 2.04.030 of the City Code. I gave you guys a copy of this the last time, but I'm going to read it again. Code 2.04.030. Procedure for handling citizens' requests for placing items on the council agenda. A. The following procedure shall be followed. One. A citizen's request to place an item on the agenda shall be in writing and shall clearly state the issue. I handed that to you at the last council meeting. Two. Upon receipt of the citizen's written request, the mayor shall determine whether the item is, one, for further council consideration, or a matter which can be responded to in a follow-up letter by a directive for action to staff or by an administrative report at a future council meeting. I have not received such a letter. B. If the matter does not lend itself to a clear resolution via the procedures delineated in subsection A2 of this section, the council at its next work session shall determine whether or not the matter should be placed on the council agenda. The decision of the council shall be communicated to the citizen making this request. Just a reminder, folks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Elrich, a letter is forthcoming by close of business tonight.
Good evening. Greetings. My name is Randy Gibson, Ward 3. I am commenting on the rent stabilization process, specifically the staff-developed RFP. Feedback from council members has been requested. I hope it and resident comments will be used to modify the RFP to better reflect the core of community values and key elements of the 2019-30 Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. Tonight, I just offer two concerns. Identifying council goals and strengthening community engagement. The RFP list of tasks does not adequately explain the why or goal of the study. Its staff's June 6 cover memo focuses on one objective produced. Quote, ensuring a range of housing options, unquote. Glaringly absent are the two other strategic objectives. Preserving affordable housing and protecting renters from displacement. These are without question the main objectives of rent stabilization and must be, must be central to the RFP and to the whole entire process. The scope and list of consultant tasks must clearly flow from the council's not-yet-articulated rent stabilization goals. Public confidence in the process requires that you take all necessary time and debate to provide that essential policy guidance. A relevant excerpt from the original 1980 Rent Stabilization Ordinance reads. Whereas it has been determined by the mayor and the council of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, to adopt an ordinance to establish rent stabilization and such regulations and controls as are necessary in order to prevent excessive, unjust, unreasonable, and oppressive rent increases, to forestall profiteering, speculation, and other disruptive practices tending to impair the public health, safety, and general welfare. It goes on. I think that's purpose. To my second concern, how can community engagement be strengthened? Many of the most important questions about rent stabilization can be answered by our own residents. Robust community engagement must seek meaningful qualitative data from renters, landlords, and also homeowners. Indeed, all of us benefit from and care about the progress of, about racial equity and socioeconomic diversity. Community outreach, seeking meaningful answers on historical impacts and future needs of rent stabilization is needed through a process that builds and hopefully restores public trust. A council-appointed task force representing the full range of stakeholders would greatly advance that trust. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments?
Arthur David Olson, Ward 4, Herbie Hancock Avenue. Some of you already know that I don't own a car or a bike. I get around on the bus and on shoes. In fact, Metro has determined that I, in 2024, was among the top 1% of bus riders. So I'm not just transit-dependent, I'm transit-addicted. All of which is to say, while I do not have expertise about bus matters, I do have lots of experience about bus matters. Later this year, the city's 10-year contract for bus stop shelters is due to expire. To get out in front of that, last week I did a survey of all the bus stop shelters in the city, both contract and non-contract. The contractor goes by various aliases. Creative Outdoor, Insight, and Signal. Don't be fooled, it's all the same company. They have 24 shelters in the city. The 15 you see in green are in good shape. The nine you see highlighted in red are in bad shape. Among the problems we have are bus stop shelters with missing side panels, five of those. We have two bus stop shelters with missing back panels. We have one bus stop shelter with a missing roof panel. And a bus stop shelter with a missing roof is a bus bench. Unless you have a shelter that doesn't have a bench, which is the case here. The city has provided rocking chairs in order to replace the benches. Unsurprisingly, the contractor has all the advertising panels in place in all 24 of the shelters because the advertising panels are the only thing they really care about. I'll also note that these sorts of results I've seen as well in Prince George's County with a much larger bus stop shelter system, so it's not just us. The city-owned shelters are in much better shape. There are five of those. Four are in good shape, one is in bad shape. The one that's in bad shape is in awful shape. There are four missing back panels. There's one missing side panel. There are missing backs to the benches. There's a missing trash bin. There's a missing recycling bin. And at least last week, there was a missing real-time display. It may be that this site is cursed. In terms of statistics, the city comes up with a B-minus grade because 80% of its shelters are in good shape. The contractor comes up with a D. Only 63% of its shelters are in good shape. And there are a few other shelters in the system. Overall, the city gets a D-rating. You won't be surprised that I have some recommendations. First, do not renew the current shelter contract. The city has taken lately to avoid ties with bad actors, such as Elon Musk and the federal government. Doing so here with this bad actor will be in line with that practice. Second, end the city's bus shelter program. It's clear that a contractor cannot do the job for us. The county, with its 0-for-2 record for city shelters, can't do the job for us. And the city itself has neither the money nor the staff to carry out a successful bus shelter program. I'm expecting, though, that folks may want to continue the bus shelter program. If that happens, one thing to do is consider getting low-cost canopies instead of shelters. We already have a canopy at New Hampshire and Holton. We didn't buy one, but we've ended up with one. And it may be that just starting out with those is a way to cut costs for the program. One possibility is to buy the stone shelter that's at the abandoned hospital. That's a shelter with extremely low maintenance. And it's also true that that's an endangered shelter. Because when Sligo Estates go in, the developers will be trying to keep riffraff like me out of the neighborhood, and getting rid of the shelter is one way to do that. There's also an unused shelter at the entrance to the hospital. And it may be possible for the city to buy that shelter or use elsewhere. I have plenty of fine print here that you can look over. One thing you'll notice in the fine print is that every ward in the city has a problem bus stop shelter. And since this is a city council meeting, questions and answers are absolutely prohibited. But if you do have questions, do feel free to send them to the electronic mail address here. And thank you for the attention.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments? Come on down.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Wallace. Happy Fourth. I'm from Ward 1, and I'm speaking on behalf of some of my neighbors. I had a friend in high school. His name was Dave. I don't remember his face. I do remember his hand, or what was left of it, after a firework exploded in it. Over time, I've met people who've served in Vietnam and other wars, and I became sensitive to how some of them feel when they hear fireworks, especially unexpectedly. What traumatic memories the sound may trigger. And as we hear more gunshots in Tacoma Park, or have seen someone shoot a gun or get shot, many of us have become highly sensitive when we hear any loud bang. But thanks to Kathy Pleby, our police department, a public information officer, she reminds us frequently in her community advisory emails that all fireworks, including sparklers, are illegal. Private use and possession of fireworks, including sparklers, carries a $500 fine. It's illegal to sell fireworks, and that's a $1,000 fine and possible jail time. Illegal means against the law. Why? For our safety. In the U.S., each Fourth of July, fireworks cause about 12 deaths, 2,000 eye injuries, and 5,000 injuries like my friend Dave's. And sparklers, those things that look like dancing fairies in the night, you know how hot they get? 1,800 degrees. Hot enough to melt my ring, my gold ring. Have you ever stepped on one in bare feet? I have. Starting in May, in Hodges Heights and Maple Avenue areas, very loud explosions were heard in the early morning hours of the morning on more than one weekend. I imagine many of us are braced for the Fourth. I've been in touch with the police department about this multiple times, and if you want the details, I'd be glad to share them offline. But I received the following email recently, and I felt disheartened and a bit dismissed. Quote, "The complaint of fireworks, which is essentially a noise complaint, does not rise to the level of an emergency and does not require an immediate response from law enforcement. While the sound and smoke from fireworks are a great nuisance for our residents, it is a misdemeanor offense that violates the Montgomery County Fire Safety Code," end quote. Now, a misdemeanor is a criminal offense. It is less serious than a felony, sure. But other misdemeanors include shoplifting, DUI, simple assault, and disorderly conduct. Disorderly conduct generally refers to behavior that disturbs the public peace, like fireworks. Two, makes unreasonable noise, like fireworks. Three, creates a hazardous condition, like fireworks. We understand that our dispatchers must prioritize incoming calls for help. However, keep in mind, fireworks are incendiary devices that, like guns, kill and maim and can even start fires. Or their sound could even act as an audio camouflage for a gunshot. One part of a police officer's job is to be proactive and protect life and property. How should our officers respond? If we don't, there's no incentive for the perpetrators to stop. Someone could get hurt badly. Think about it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments?
Colleen Cordes, Ward 1. Mayor Circe, these comments are really addressed to you as our leader. I want to support the idea, and please ask you, please, will you schedule a council session for the full council to have a real discussion and come to group decision on the goals for the rent stabilization study? And also allow, after it's revised, the RFP is revised by staff, to meet the council's direction, also vote on the final, approving the final RFP. It's such a major policy issue that it's not appropriate for the staff to take the lead. And you are our leader, and I'm... And you are our leader, and I'm asking you, will you please schedule such a discussion? And I also just want to quote from something you wrote in March 22 to the County Council. You said, "As the Minor Master Plan acknowledges, both the city and county will need to ensure adequate protections for residents at risk of displacement." And you said, "We will continue to ensure that existing policies, such as rent stabilization, tenant opportunity to purchase laws, and city and county tenant displacement laws appropriately meet the needs of our residents." So you directly connected the rent stabilization law to protection from displacement. There is nothing in the RFP that we saw on June 11 that gets to this incredibly important point of protecting our current residents from displacement. And I believe it's something like 1,400 units probably now that are rent stabilized. That means thousands of our residents are under the rent stabilization law. And in the review, it's so important to not just preserve affordable housing, but preserve our deeply affordable, our rare precious resource that's been recognized by the county, by county leaders. Rare precious resource of deeply affordable housing that needs to be in the RFP. I'd urge you to make that a council goal, and also really strong emphasis on protecting from displacement. I also just want to acknowledge Mayor Circe that in the questionnaire that Tacoma For All had in the last campaign, they asked about, you know, what kind of changes do we need so that there could be a construction of more apartment buildings in the city? And part of your response was modifying our rent stabilization law is going to be critical. So I think that that's the only place I've seen you come right out in public. There probably are other places, saying that you believe that modifying the rent stabilization law is going to be critical to encourage developers. So I hope that other council members will be able to bring their voices into this conversation about goals, and there can be a group decision led by you, because you are our leader. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments? Do we have any virtual public comments?
Yes.
We have Susan Rogers, and then we have Mary Machuie.
Excellent. Susan Rogers, you're up next.
Thanks very much. Good evening, council members, city manager, and staff. My name is Susan Rogers. I've lived in Tacoma Park for about 10 years, and I live in Ward 2. You should have received a document from Community Vision for Tacoma, which provides our suggested changes in the consultant RFP for the review of Tacoma Park's rent stabilization. I would like to personally highlight the importance of assuring that the RFP places major emphasis on renters' protection from displacement. And I know I may be repeating Colleen here, but this is something I feel so personally strongly about that I wanted to testify on it. More specifically, I'm referring to protecting tenants who are potentially priced out of affordable housing options, or renters who would lose their homes if buildings are torn down to make room for new construction, as could take place under the Minor Master Plan Amendment that was passed by our council. Secondly, I feel that the RFP should also emphasize the protection of local businesses, especially small landlords in Tacoma Park who are struggling financially to maintain older buildings. What does this mean specifically regarding the consultant's work? The consultant should attempt to identify revisions that would increase such protection, as well as examining how potential changes might increase the threat of displacement. This would require building-by-building inventory of code violations and needed repairs for upgrades. In that context, the RFP should review a proposed use of the city's Housing Reserve Fund to rehabilitate some of the older buildings that house rent-stabilized units. I feel this is crucial for addressing renters' protection from displacement. Thank you for hearing my public testimony.
Thank you very much.
Oh, hi, mayor and council members. This is Mayor, I'm Mary Jane Machuie. I've lived in Ward 2 for over 40 years. I'm not sure how long it's going to be, because it's really difficult for me to pay for the property taxes. And there's a lot to talk about renters. How about low-income homeowners? I've noticed a lot of upper white people moving in, and the black, my older black neighbors moving out, even on my block. I've been here over 40 years. I've seen it happen. Too many people have sold their homes. I don't know how it goes to developers, that they're made into two or three times their size and sell for over $1 million. It's ridiculous. I'm sorry. And I asked a black friend of mine who's lived in this over 55 years in Tacoma Park, she has children and grandchildren. Why aren't they moving in here? She says they can't afford it. And she's a really good person. She was a crossing guard for 50 years for this city, for God's sakes. And her grandchildren can't even afford to live here. I think it's horrible. Anyways, I started Parents with Special Needs Adult, I'm going in a tangent, exactly 10 years ago, and there are two black women in my group who really, really would like to afford a house in Tacoma Park but can't. And one of them has, both of them have severely disabled children, grown children. And I think it's horrible when good people like that who face these difficulties. And I'm facing difficulties of my own with my son, because he lost his job. And I'm supporting two people, which can be difficult. So anyways, and also, I'd like to say three, shout out to three people who have reached out to me, though a lot more needs to be done. Mr. Greg Clark from the Recreation Department Director, Ms. Hanzak, and Ms. Dibala from the council. Thank you for reaching out to me. There still needs to be a lot to be done, but thank you for at least starting something. And thank you very much, and thank you for announcing the BB Campbell Minority Mental Health Awareness. And I think, Taraja B. Henson, I also think of her in this respect, and give her my respect. Anyways, thank you. And also, thank you, Arthur David. I've had to wait at bus shelters because I can't legally drive anymore. So I empathize strongly with this lack of shelters. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Machuie. Okay, we're going to move to council comments. Do we have any council comments this evening? Councilmember Gilbert, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for all the comments. The PSA on the fireworks was very much needed and appreciated. I had a friend lose some fingers when I was growing up, so that's important, that we keep that fireworks safety in forefront of our minds, and we watch our children as the day comes close. I know all too well the frustration in trying to respond to all those firework complaints, too. But I do feel they're important. So I know that the Police Department gets a little frustrated with that, and it's kind of a hard thing to curtail. The Juneteenth celebration, it went off okay. It went good. I'm so proud of the staff of the committee and their ability to make the necessary adjustments because of the rain that happened the night before, and the field being soaked and not available for the event, and they moved it over to the parking lot, and it just looked like that's where it's supposed to be. So phenomenal job by the staff in getting the celebration off and running. Unfortunately, you know, rain came and took it out a little early, but we were able to have a good time. I got to see a whole bunch of people I hadn't seen in many years. So it's refreshing for me to see some of those faces. A lot of people came out, and overall, a good event. Really sorry for some of the vendors who lost some of the canopies or whatever that was damaged during that horrible storm. And speaking of that storm, we had quite a few people lose power. I lost power for just a few hours, and that was hard enough. But some people lost power for days. And I just want to say how frustrating it was not to be able to do something about it, for those of you who were out of power for that long a period of time, but also how proud I was of our residents for their resiliency and the patience that they had in waiting for it to come back up. Really proud of the people who had to endure that, and sorry that you had to endure that. My last note is a death notification. I've seen them doing these once every couple of weeks, but Tony Carey was my opponent in the last election, and he recently lost his wife, Bessie Jabril, on June 20. And so anyone who knows him, reach out, he could use your support. I will announce at some point the funeral arrangements when I dig those up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Councilmember Hanzak?
My condolences to Tony. Thank you for your comments about Juneteenth. Councilmember Gilbert, I too was there, and it was a beautiful event, closed out with one fantastic song, and then a big, big storm that destroyed a bunch of tents, unfortunately. But we will be out there again next year. And the storm actually did quite a lot of damage in Ward 5, as well as across the city. And I just want to thank the staff in particular.
I've got the city council on now on TV, and I had my set, I set something a little bit.
Let's just make sure Ms. Machuie's muted.
Perfect.
Thank you.
In the storm, in the storm last, well, I guess that was two weeks ago now, there were actually some very, very significant trees down in the whole city, but also definitely in Ward 5. People probably saw the tree that had fallen on top of the Cambridge. Fortunately, nobody was hurt, but I just want to express my appreciation for how much work I know the city and the police were doing that evening and over the coming days. We also had a major AC outage for multiple days, not just one, not just two, but more than three days during the height of the heat. Thank you, Mayor Circe. Thank you, Delegate Charcutian. Thank you, city staff, namely Devin McNally and Asmaa Hapti, who were on call and really, really brought people to bear on the situation. But it was a very heavy situation. It remains not fully resolved, quite honestly. And it just, it just brings home the aging infrastructure of our buildings. And I really, you know, it is not a straightforward answer. Our funds as a city are not big enough, unfortunately, to deal with the scale of these issues. And frankly speaking, management is also a challenge that comes with infrastructure and how these things are handled. So the solutions are not always straightforward, but our residents do deserve better, a lot better. And I hope that you can, to some degree at least, maybe dialogue with us, or dare I say, trust that we are deep in it. And I do believe we are going in the right direction of travel. I really, really, really do, seeing how my residents are suffering, and I believe that this is the right direction to go. The particular building in question is actually not governed by our rent stabilization laws, just so you know. But we have nine such buildings on Maple Avenue alone. And thank you, Ms. Wallace, about the fireworks statement. It is, I've already heard a whole slew of fireworks going off, and it comes up every year over on my side of town. It's the Silver Spring Police that I don't always see coming out, and I don't know what's happening. I worry about people's safety. And Arthur David, the bus shelters, you've, I have been walking too through looking at the shelters. I love this data. I will be using this data. I've had this ongoing conversation for more than a year with our staff about what we can do to address this. And as you said, we are coming to the end of a contract in November 2025. So I hope that, you know, since PG County is facing similar issues, again, not an easy set of solutions, but I would love to see us try to see how creative we can get with scarce dollars. And I think shade is absolutely essential, as is protection from the elements. So I wouldn't be a fan of abandoning shelters. I also, today, I just want to flag, we just passed July 1, and I saw two, not one, but two landscapers using gas-powered blowers today. I stopped and spoke Spanish to both of them, and very kindly and gently just said, hey, I just wanted to make sure I don't want you to get fined. One of them was across the street from us, you know, in Silver Spring. And I have to tell you, I felt really saddened. I want to share with you what they both said, which is, I don't feel I can do this job without this blower. And I said, do you think that there are not enough outlets? And they said, it's just that I just can't do it in the amount of time that this needs to be done, nor can I just do the job, period. It's just too big. So anyway, these are the kinds of hurdles we're going to be facing. I don't know what the answers are entirely. We knew this was coming, but just flagging that. Sorry. And if you'll just allow me, one more thing. USAID officially closed down today. My heart just broke. I hope it's not forever. This is my line of work, and I know it is for many of you. This is what you've thrown your whole careers into. I want to salute everyone who has dedicated their lives to federal government service and other kinds of service, including USAID. Once again, this is not the end. Things shall rise again in a few years, I'm sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak, for mentioning AID. I want to thank the many people who spoke tonight, and especially those who were speaking about rent stabilization. I share your view that the council should be discussing among ourselves, this council, what our policy goals are with this rent stabilization review. And I agree with you, those of you who were discussing how there are strategy points made in the adopted strategy that we have that are not reflected fully in the draft RFP. We've all shared comments with the staff, but we haven't seen one another's comments or discussed them, and therefore, we haven't really come to a meeting of the minds about what we're trying to do here in council. And I really feel that that means that it will be difficult for us to send clear signals to contractors about what it is we want help in achieving. And therefore, I agree with you. I respectfully have discussed this with the mayor, and I hope that we get to do what you've called on us to do. But in any event, I share the goals that several of you referred to, that we focus on preserving and protecting our affordable housing as key elements of what rent stabilization is for. I wanted to note that we had a very interesting meeting about the Piny Branch Elementary School and Pool and Gymnasium reconstruction, and what that would mean for transportation during the interim period, the timing of getting to another holding school, et cetera. And thanks to our comm staff, who made it possible to have that meeting here in the auditorium, and therefore, make it possible for people to participate virtually and to see the recording that was held on Monday night. And I think we learned some interesting facts about that, and what our opportunities are to perhaps find a less disagreeable option for our kids. We have a lot of work still to do on that, and I know the mayor is working hard and talking with people about what some of those options are. And I think that the key thing that I took away from that was that the parents in this community are ready to coalesce behind the idea that we need to prioritize getting this school fixed, and then we can turn to prioritizing finding the best possible interim option. And that it's, and I also learned that the cost of replacing the pool is a tiny fraction of the overall cost of this project, and should hardly be seen as an obstacle to making the right choice about what the redesign is going to be. So let's all hang together and get this done. And if I miss, just take another couple seconds to say, I'm offering a coffee with the council member on Saturday, July 12, at the Spring Mill Bakery, from 10 to 12, and I hope to see lots of Ward 1 people there. Thank you, and happy July 4.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Westle. Councilmember Weslek.
I have a few things. I want to first, just acknowledging that many, all of us were at the Maryland Municipal League Conference last week. I had a great time, made a lot of connections, so I just kind of wanted to publicly thank our community that your tax dollars helped us go to this event, and I know I personally really got a lot out of it, so I was really happy about that. I will be posting information. I'm going to have an online listening session, a town hall type thing, with Ward Six residents in particular. I really want to hear people's feedback about Piney Branch. A parent actually reached out and asked me if I could do something like this, and I thought that was a really good idea, as well as be able to talk about some of the other things that are going on right now for the council. So that will be on Tuesday, July 15th, at 7:30 online, so hopefully folks can join that. And as, I feel like I'm, as the resident queer, kind of constantly mentioning the really depressing stuff going on. But I know last meeting, I mentioned the very disappointing Supreme Court ruling allowing states to ban gender affirming care for kids. And two days later, they made many other bad decisions, one of which was local, being that the Montgomery County Public Schools will not be able to have LGBTQ plus inclusive books just available, that kids can, parents can have their children just get up and walk out of the classroom. And I worry that that will expand to who knows what else. But I just, one of the things I've been thinking about for that, I know I mentioned here that I was going to be doing the Career Day at Tacoma Park Elementary, and there was one anecdote I wanted to share, which was that I had some slides up, and I talked about campaigning, because I thought that was a little more interesting than the, this. I talked about both, but the campaigning, you know, I had pictures of parties and stuff, so that was a little more interesting. And in one of them, I had a picture of my family all wearing our Amy for Ward Six t-shirts. And after I said, my wife and my two daughters, one of the kids in one of the classrooms, she goes, wife, did you say wife? Two girls can't be married to each other. And another kid in the class went, yes, they can. Two women can be married and two men can be married. My friend has two dads. And then another kid said, kind of quieter. Yeah, I have two moms. And then we all moved on. And that's what they don't want to be happening, just a recognition that a family like mine exists. And I knew then to probably what it meant to the kid who said he had two moms, that I showed my family. So I just wanted to share that as you think about how some of these things might roll down and impact our community. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Weslek. Councilmember Landman, let's hit your lights. Councilmember Schlegel.
Thank you. Thank you so much for my colleagues' comments. And as a teacher, I've seen that same kind of moment happen in classes of mine, and I was thinking about that when the mayor read the proclamation for Minority Mental Health Awareness Month, that it has been encouraging to me that I've seen more students of color in the last five years feeling comfortable acknowledging mental health challenges in themselves or in their families. And I think we just need to continue to push on that. I am shocked to hear about Bessie Jabril's passing. She was such a wonderful person and very important to the Parkside apartment community, and I met her on several occasions, so I'll be reaching out to Tony. Arthur David Olson, thank you for your real careful inventory of the bus shelters, and it's all the more important because I found out that the ride-on buses are now going to be free for everybody that Montgomery County has made that decision. So thank you. I did have a listening session for Ward Three residents about PBEs last Wednesday, and I think three main themes that came out in that discussion were a real desire for creativity from MCPS in responding to the site constraints, as well as to the transportation and holding center challenges. Creativity, thinking outside the box. A second was support for the number three and number four options, which are more towards a total rebuild, or a total rebuild, which is definitely heard loud and clear, as Councilmember Landman said. And third, people were expressing concerns about the equity of the process thus far, who had been heard from in meetings and seen at meetings, who hadn't been particularly residents, right, in the immediate neighborhood of the school. And then also the equity concerns in relation to the continuation of the recreation facilities there, the pool and the larger-sized gymnasium in particular. Thank you to everyone who commented about the protection of good quality, deeply affordable housing, including Mary Machuwi, who spoke about that on behalf of homeowners. I thought that I would just, if I might have a few extra seconds, just read briefly what I sent in my update, so my colleagues can hear this. The strategic plan has three housing objectives to protect, preserve, and produce. I'm shortening what I wrote. It does not call for alterations to rent stabilization as a strategy for producing new housing, but staff and some members of the council have indicated a desire to adjust the ordinance to generate more favorable conditions for the construction of new housing. I believe the production of new housing is truly a worthy goal. However, I believe we should keep rent stabilization adjustments largely decoupled from that worthy objective and evaluate the effectiveness of our policy in terms of what it sets out to achieve: stability, racial equity, economic diversity, and economic opportunity, since these are long-celebrated values for our community. And so in that light, I also feel that we need to have a review that fully engages all residents as stakeholders, and that it also emphasizes that occupants of rent-stabilized housing aren't necessarily seeking the construction of new rental housing, but could understandably be interested in transitioning into deeply affordable ownership. So there are a number of data that I have requested to be included in the RFP, but as Councilmember Landman said, I don't know what's going to come out in the RFP, and that makes me very uncomfortable. I feel like this is a generational decision that we're making, and we should, we should do it as a group of seven and really hear each other and understand, for example, what are we speaking about when we say we're evaluating the effectiveness of the ordinance? Is it the effectiveness for protection and preservation, or is it the effectiveness for production? What are we meaning? So I just want to make sure our council is compassionate, informed on this issue, and that that's very clear to all the residents. I'm not ruling out the importance of listening to landlord and property owner perspectives, of course, but it's important to listen to them. If there are any incentives for the removal of properties from rent stabilization, we sure don't want a rent stabilization policy with no properties under it in a few years. So it's super important to make sure we understand what has our inventory been over the years since 1980, and how are we doing on that, and how can we keep that inventory or even expand it? So I'll stop there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. So it's been a while. I just want to kind of do a quick recap on a few things and send out my appreciation. Thank you to our sustainability manager for the Go Solar workshop that was held. It was, I wasn't able to stay long because I had different events to go to, but the parts, the quick minutes that I saw were really good. So I want to send a special shout-out to Dorothy Estrada for her work there. Also, want to again send my sincere appreciation to Chair for inviting me out to their volunteer event, and sincerely hope that they are able to get the help that they need to continue to do the great work that they do in our community and others. Just want to echo really quickly Councilmember Hanzak's appreciation to Deputy City Manager Hapti, Deputy City Manager Eubanks, and our HCD Director Devin McNally in terms of the work that you all did in terms of Essex House and the air conditioning outage. I will say, I personally drove from, directly from Ocean City to Essex House and stood in that building for about five hours, and Devin was right by my side while we were waiting for air conditioners to be brought in. And so I want to make sure that people understand the amount of work that our staff do every day. They're not, they're not novices. They know this work. They live, breathe, and have been trained in this work. And so it's important for us to acknowledge and respect the expertise that they all bring to the table, and more importantly, the commitment that they bring to the table as it pertains to ensuring quality housing for our residents. Just as a quick reminder, I did not announce this earlier, but on June 27th, it was last Friday, the city council met in administrative function to conduct interviews on outside legal firms to perform an independent audit of the events given rise to the litigation known as Cooper versus the City of Tacoma Park. So I just want to make sure that folks are aware that the council is continuing to work in that vein. Also want to thank MCPS for agreeing to host the last meeting here in the municipal building. I said, hey, if you're having trouble with recording, and hey, if you have trouble, Piney Branch doesn't have the tech, we do, you could just come here. So I want to thank MCPS for being open to identifying a non-school location to host the Piney Branch feasibility study presentation that was held on Monday. But also want to encourage residents in our community to definitely continue to advocate. It's a little challenging because the process is one that is, I always describe these processes as circular. They're not really linear, which makes it often difficult to know where you are in a process at a given point in time. And so I think one of the things that's really important for everyone to understand is where we are right now is proposals for concept plans for the renovation for the school. Those proposals and cost estimates tied to them will need to go before the superintendent. They will also need to go before the county council. Then we have to do about two years' worth of actual design work in terms of what the actual school will look like. And then we get to the point where we're dealing with construction and where holding schools need to be. So I just, I say that to say, and along that entire process, we have to make sure that we have the money, or that MCPS has the money to move forward to those next stages, right? So I just bring that up to say that this is not, this is not your only bite at the apple. This is probably just your first bite at the apple. And we will be with the community along the way, advocating for the needs of the community, but also, when I say community, I am not just talking about our residents who live here and enjoy the pool, but also our teachers and the resources that they need to make sure are available in the school, the space needs, the learning environment that we should prioritize for the children at Piney Branch, as well as trying to make sure that we are advocating for the least challenging approach to identification of a holding school. So with that, in terms of what's coming up, Fourth of July is coming up. It's Friday. A lot of us will be in the parade. I hope I'm not the only one. I have lots of candy. I need people to help me give it out. I have the whole wagon this year. So looking forward to that. I hope to see everyone out at the Fourth of July Parade and the block party. Also, on Sunday, I will be at the Universal Circus. They have invited all of the Black Mayors in the state to come out and to be recognized during this circus, so I'm excited about that. And then last but not least, I do want to talk about the rent stabilization study. And I recognize that, you know, rent stabilization or talking about it is a bit of a, it's a, it's a taboo topic. And so often, the minute we mention it, it's always sometimes viewed with apprehension and defensiveness, because what we have is great, right? What we have is great, don't touch it. And I would be the first to say, and I'm willing to admit, that it's a good practice for us to always be reflective and look at what we have, to really determine whether or not there are adjustments that need to be made. And I know that there is a desire for us to figure out what, completely what we want to change before we have the study, right? And this is another example where the process is not linear. It's actually a little bit more circular. It's important for us, and the reason why, not just, this council voted about three times saying, hey, we want to do some review of housing policies, and rent stabilization was mentioned. It was a part of the budget priorities vote. It was a point that's in our council priorities. It is also something that was voted on as part of the budget, and that's with this council. Prior council included it as part of their priorities, did. And the prior, a council before that, the ones that actually worked on the Housing Economic Development Strategic Plan, said that, hey, there are some aspects of our laws that we need to take a look at. One of the things that I stress all the time is that housing has a ton of different levers. There's sometimes when you can pull one, and then you actually could cause something inadvertent to happen. And so I think it's really important for us to take a look at our laws, but do it through a data-driven approach, right? And so that's why I think it's really important for us to have the RFP go out, to have our staff, who I mentioned earlier, is in the trenches, and they understand the stuff. They understand from the perspective of implementation, some of those points of our laws that may be pain points that might make sense to have some reviews and the types of data that are needed. They understand scope in terms of the amount of money that we've awarded and what can actually feasibly be done. And then what will happen is this council will have the ability to vote on whether or not we award the contract. I think it's important also for everybody to understand the delineation of the roles and responsibilities between council and the city manager. We vote on budget. We vote to approve expenditures, but when it comes to the actual administrative aspects of contracting, that falls under the city manager. So again, I know that there's concern. I get it. I understand. But like I said with MCPS, this is not the council's first and only bite at the apple. The council will have lots of discussions. It was discussed during our last work session. We're talking about over, I think the timeline went to May of 2026, in terms of the length of discussions that this council will have between presentations from the study and then actual discussions on what we want to do with any recommendations or any data that we hear as a result of the study. So this is not our only bite at the apple. This is not the only opportunity that this council will have to discuss what we want to do. I'm a firm believer, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I don't want to talk about it. If it works, it works. And then we can And then we can focus our efforts on those areas where we may have identified or we've had an objective review or identify, hey, these are some places where our tenants are saying are challenging or our landlords are saying are challenging, or our tenant advocacy groups are saying this is a pain point. And use that information as a way to direct how we choose, this council chooses, to take those appropriate next steps, which would be any modification to our codes if they're needed. So I just want to, and I hate, I'm spending a lot of time because I know it's July the 2nd and some people, particularly our staff, may want to do other things as we get ready to head into the July 4th holiday. But I do just want to make that point clear in terms of the approach that has been outlined and in terms of the role that the council has, particularly as it relates to the RFP component. And, you know, I've heard some concepts of approving an RFP. And that's, that's the staff's job to develop contracting materials that have to not only meet our desires, but also various contracting laws and state laws. So I just want to leave it at that. And again, I appreciate everybody coming out and all of the feedback. I know you're not going to, you're not going to let me off easy. You all never do. So I'm expecting that this conversation is going to continue. But I'm hoping that at a minimum, we can move forward with posting the RFP, which will allow us to start having those in-depth conversations regarding potential proposals that come forward and what we may ultimately be willing to fund. And so with that, I'll turn things over to our city manager, Mr. Dispierto, to go through city manager comments.
I gave everybody their own power. You can, you can, okay, did you, did you hit the mic? Hit the button. There you go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council and guests from our police department. Want to address cooling centers. I'm sure we're still in store for quite a bit of hot weather this summer. Beat the heat. With the extreme heat we are experiencing, we urge residents, please take precautions against heat-related illnesses. You're welcome to share this information with neighbors, especially those who may not have access to email or social media, and we will have this information posted on the city website. The following city facilities are open to the public and available as cooling centers. Number one, Tacoma Park Community Center, 7500 Maple Avenue here, second floor. Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. Saturday from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. And Sunday from 12 noon to 5 p.m. Two, the city's recreation center at 7315 New Hampshire Avenue. Monday through Friday from 9 a.m. to 9 p.m. Saturday from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. And Sunday, it is closed. The city's temporary library location at 7505 New Hampshire Avenue has hours on Monday through Thursday, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. And Friday through Sunday from 12 noon to 6 p.m. So again, we'll have that information posted. Reminder, all fireworks are illegal in Montgomery County as we approach the 4th of July weekend, as has been alluded to earlier. We remind everyone that all fireworks, including sparklers, are illegal in Montgomery County. Possession of private use of firework or private use of fireworks is a $500 fine. And selling fireworks in Maryland can be a $1,000 fine. Let's keep our community safe and celebrate responsibly. In observance of Independence Day, the Tacoma Park Police Department offices will be closed on Friday, July 4th. But as always, emergency services remain available 24/7. And congratulations to our new graduates and promotees. We are proud to recognize Yanina Tikas and Jemaya Watford, who graduated from UMPD Session Number 39 on Wednesday, June 25th. Congratulations to both cadets on this important milestone in their careers. We also celebrated the promotion of four of our outstanding officers on June 24th. Please join me in congratulating Captain Matthew Mizutti, Lieutenant Kristen Peterson, Sergeant Thomas Sims, and Sergeant Ernest Atwell. Their leadership and service are vital to the safety and wellbeing of our community. And finally, from the police department, save the date. Coffee with a cop is scheduled for July 17th from 9 a.m. to noon at Tacoma Cafe, 8006 Flower Avenue. From Public Works Department, last Thursday, June 26th, the city's Sustainability Office was pleased to host its second annual Go Solar DKPK Community Information Session. The event took place in person in the auditorium, but was also streamed online by City TV. Over 40 people attended and we were joined by partners from MEA, Solar United Neighbors, Neighborhood Sun, Alum Energy Habitat for Humanity, Electrify DC, and we were also joined by Delegate Lorie Charcutian. Content and discussion covered options for rooftop solar, community solar, and a unique soulshare option for multifamily properties, as well as information on grants and incentives and an explanation of how households can subscribe to clean energy for their electricity. These materials are now available on the city's Go Solar webpage at tacoparkmd.gov, including a link to the recording. And finally, from the city manager's office, this week's staff shout out from the city manager's office, myself and my team, is to all our city staff who work out of doors. Our public works employees, police, code enforcement, and recreation staff are outside for much of the summer and continue to provide excellent service even when conditions are far less than ideal. We extend our sincere thanks to all of you. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to our presentation for this evening on the Library and Community Center project update. Me too. The covering is down next to the bathrooms?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before I get started with the presentation, I just wanted to very briefly speak to Councilmember Wesleks' comments about the Supreme Court ruling on the MCPS case. I share your disappointment, the whole library staff does. And I just want to affirm the city's library's commitment to keeping LGBTQIA2S+ books not only in our collections, but prominently featured. Our LGBTQ+ neighbors are important and we value them and they deserve to see themselves in our collections and in our programs. So just briefly touching on that, but I am actually here to give the quarterly update on the Library and Community Center redevelopment project, which is nearing its final stages. So while the library is the most visible part of this project, the scope extends into a few different areas that will yield accessible, usable, and comfortable spaces for residents to enjoy. In addition to the library, this graphic also depicts the computer center, the media or the Mac lab, the senior room, a new lounge area, new recreation department staff workspaces, and gender-inclusive restrooms down the hall from here and in the library. The project areas, both new and redeveloped, are designed to support the role of these facilities as a community anchor. Every department in the city works towards the city council's goal of advancing a community of belonging, and this has been at the forefront of our minds throughout the design and construction process here as well. As we navigate the realities of both our literal and political climates together, I think that intentionally designed spaces dedicated to lifelong learning, sustainability, and nurturing community connections are going to be especially important. And this list represents some of the tangible ways that we have been working towards established council goals. So whether indoors, outdoors, or underground, this project touches many different areas of improvement and we're really excited to welcome people back soon. A complete list of things that have been accomplished up to this point would be many, many slides. But these are some of the highlights. Since we last updated in March, we have worked towards completing infrastructure and utility work underground and inside the facilities. Climate control, plumbing, and electrical systems are all installed. The indoor spaces are framed in and finished with paint, glass, and fixtures. The restrooms are nearly ready to reopen down the hallway from the reception desk and outside the auditorium. And we are finalizing policy for that now as well. The rear parking lot is open. The mosaic mural has been reinstalled and we're going to be adding a frame around the panels to secure and protect it for the long term. We've also executed a purchase order for furnishings and are awaiting delivery and installation of those components. And Tree Incarnation is working on tables made from wood reclaimed from the trees that were felt from the site with more about that on the next slide. We're really excited to be working with Tree Incarnation on tables that are going to be centerpieces in the main reading room and the children's room. The grain on the wood is really beautiful and the large gathering tables are going to highlight it really nicely. The Washington Post actually published a piece in May about Marcus Sims' work as Tree Incarnation's founder and his vision for reclaiming these heritage materials. So we're embracing his vision and letting his instincts for featuring these organic textures lead the way as he crafts pieces that residents will be able to use and interact with for many years to come. So I'm going to pivot to the financial update. We've used about 87% of the total available funds as of last week. So that's about 13.48 million of the available 15.538 million. Funding sources include grants, which is about 20%, ARPA funds, the municipal bond, interest from the municipal bond, and a small amount from the unassigned reserve that was approved in the fiscal year 25 budget amendment for 55,000. Anything remaining from that contingency will be returned to the unassigned reserve. The original contingency was 5% of the total contract value with Doyle Construction, or about 461,000. We have added contingency funds as it has become necessary, mostly due to delays and inflation and redesign. And just to quickly recap the contingency, our original allowance of about 461,000 was within the standard amount allocated for unforeseen conditions on projects of this size and scope. As the table shows, we were well within it for its intended purpose. But of course, we had to add funds to address the permitting delays and the required design changes. DPS permit changes cost about 906,000 for floodplain revisions and relocating a transformer. And the delay in the full notice to proceed cost an additional 540,000. The unforeseen conditions, as it is intended for, has been about 275,000. All of that said, we are nearing completion. We're working on addressing punch list items with our general contractor so they can turn the building over to the city and we can obtain the full occupancy permit. The solar panels still need to be installed, as well as the furnishings that are on order. Lead documentation and testing is ongoing and will be ongoing throughout furniture installation and for a period thereafter. Looking forward, we're also planning for the relocation of the library and recreation department equipment and services back to our site here as well. So it looks, it may look finished from street level, but we're not quite there yet. There's still a few things that need to be finished. Our current timeline, later this month and into early August, we will close to prepare for the move, the library, I should say. The library will close to prepare for the move. We do have an expected furniture delivery date of August 4th. That's when the furnishings vendor is scheduled to begin delivering and installing things, which is expected to take seven or eight business days. We are coordinating a move with our moving services company for shortly after that, once the furnishings are in place. And then in mid to late August, the recreation and library staff will get settled into the new space after it is finished. The library staff are going to be working to complete any necessary shifting of the collections, finalize and train on new policies, procedures, and workflows to reflect the new facilities because there are some entirely new spaces for us, like the study rooms and the program room. And I generally prepare to welcome patrons back into the space. In late August or early September, we'll have a soft open of the library. Recreation staff may reopen sooner than the library. We have a lot to do in this new space, so we may take a little bit longer, but we will move things along as quickly as we can responsibly do since we know people are eager to get into that space. And then in September, a ribbon cutting event is in the planning stages. And then just to recap, things that have been happening throughout this process, we have been coordinating with schools. Of course, school is not in session anymore. But we are looking at reopening around the time that the school year is coming back into session. So we're going to work on helping to coordinate that with MCPS. Services at the community center have been continually offered. There have not really been any service interruptions. But city administration is still here, HCD, the finance window, IT, the main reception desk. And as this says here, the continuity of services was prioritized. And I feel like our other departments have been really wonderful in coming in and making sure that everybody is still taken care of despite everything that has been going on on the other side of the site. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you so much. This is exciting. And I congratulate everyone for keeping, keeping on schedule. It's amazing and fabulous. I just was, I was just wondering first, I have two questions. One is related to if we have any ideas, and this may not just be a question for you, but it sounds like maybe you'll be back in the space by beginning of September and things will be out of there, maybe even by end of August. Are there any thoughts on how that space might be creatively used since we'll still be renting it through the end of September? I don't have anything on the top of my head, but is that anything that's been discussed? It seems like a nice big space for something, for something.
Yeah, we haven't had any concrete plans. I think making sure that we wrap things up pretty neatly with all of the equipment that's still in there is going to be an important component of that. But in terms of planning for events in there, we have not actually approached that yet.
Okay, just throwing that out there because it's kind of an interesting opportunity. The other thing is, I wonder, and you may not have this data because I didn't send this to you in advance, but I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on some of the different constituencies and services that you've been able to provide in the current site? And when, when, or if you have just some thoughts on how we might hear about that, either, you know, now or later. I know this has been an issue for a long, long time, but I would be curious to hear a little bit more about that. And again, it doesn't have to be right now.
Sure. I mean, I will put some information together, get with the staff, and make sure that I've got all my talking points in a row. But it is important to us to keep a footprint, not just in wards five and six, but throughout the city. And that's been a part of our overarching outreach strategy that we've been working on for the last couple of years and making sure that we try really hard to have at least one, hopefully multiple events in each ward. With Ward Six and close to Ward Five, we intend to maintain a presence at the Crossroads Farmers Market. Don't foresee that partnership fading. It's been really, really great. And last week, we had a bilingual book giveaway. That was, I think, our third year doing that, which has been really well received each time. So I think as we are able to support existing opportunities to keep a footprint over there and learn about new ones, it's definitely important to us that everybody in the city has an opportunity to interact with the library staff and services.
Thanks. I just, I guess what I want to be more clear maybe too is that if, if, if you're able, it'd be really great to, and I know this was just one, I'm just one council member, but I think it might be really helpful for us to hear what you think is different about the way that you were able to serve, sort of, you know, was it, was it a larger quantity of X type of ask? And kind of what those differences are? And then we can wrap our heads around with you and the staff. with you and the staff what might be needed to, if at all, to try to continue that, because it might not just be through the library, is what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Councilmember Landman.
Thank you for your presentation. The space, the temporary space allowed you to spread out in some ways that the permanent library before did not. I was thinking in particular about the maker's space and the storage space you had in the back for all the, you know, piles of knitting yarn and things like that. Are you going to, in the new space, are you going to be able to accommodate those activities? And have you, you know, mapped out whether those new activities are going to find a home in the permanent location? I'm curious whether you're going to be able to do those activities.
We haven't planned out exactly where those items are going to live, where they will be accessible to the public. I think we're, that's part of what staff is going to be working on when we get into the space and have the furnishings and everything in there, to make sure that we're putting things in a place that is discoverable and identifiable and relatively easy for people to use and interact with. So it's not planned just yet, but I know that we had, I worked last night, the six to eight desk shift, and we had somebody using the sewing machine, a kid using the sewing machine back there for most of the shift. So it's definitely getting use, and as much as we can encourage people to keep making things and working with their hands, we definitely would like to.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Dibala.
Yes, thank you very much for this presentation, and thank you for all the work to get to this point. I'm really, really excited. I just wanted to double check on a couple of the cost-related things. So there have been a lot of unexpected delays and changes, and I see that there have been quite a few change orders, and that's expected, you know, perfectly understandable in a large project. There's a couple listed that I don't remember seeing before, but I don't think they're new, and I just want to make sure, this is on the green sheet, the cover sheet, the water mitigation, that's not plumbing, that's the underground water.
I believe so.
Yeah. And then the changes in the slab elevation, that also isn't new, it just wasn't on the list before, I think.
Right.
Because that has to do with the transformers.
Yes.
Okay, so there's a few pending change orders left, but they're already included in the final project budget, and so if I'm understanding you correctly, we're done.
No. We get change orders every day. Our hope is that our contingency-
I keep wanting to say it, I'm sorry.
I want to too, Councilmember, but we do literally get change orders, not every day, but weekly.
Every week.
And our hope is that the contingency that we have so far will capture all of those that come between now and the end of the project.
Okay, and right now, it looks that way.
The last time we checked.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, fabulous. I can't wait.
Thanks. Me neither.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Schlegel.
Mainly just wanted to thank you, Ms. Jones, for the, for the presentation and the update. I appreciate also the care in thinking about the safe routes to school and how, how the final part of the construction and the move will overlap with the beginning of the school year. I had a couple of questions, which probably, one's probably not in your department, but, and one is probably not in your radar right now. If you're just curious about your thoughts, the not in your department question probably is, my kids have been, you know, looking and seeing the progress and everything, and wondering when the full complement of trees will be planted on the grassy area along Philadelphia. And I'm curious whether that's part of the construction cost, but it's not really important, it's probably not a big amount. And then the second question is about, as you've been hearing maybe bits and pieces about the Piney Branch Elementary School process, have you had any, any thoughts about if the school is relocated for a couple of years, how the, because it's been so important as an after-school location, how that might be, continue to be coordinated with the school system? So, thank you.
Regarding the first question, and directed, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe all of the trees that are to be planted in front of the library have been planted. The only remaining trees are those along Maple Avenue in front of the city building, and those will be planted by the city in the fall.
Thank you.
With Piney Branch, we have not had staff discussions about it yet, but one of the things that we are looking forward to doing when we have a little bit of time with the closure is having some strategic planning discussions as a staff, and that's definitely something that I would like to include, since we do know that it's coming down the pike at some point. And while we may not have like a robust concrete strategy that results from that, I think it'll be good to at least get the conversation started and make sure that people are thinking about it and communicate ideas as they come to them.
Thanks. I suppose as design moves forward, if it moves forward, I think that MCPS design team folks would, would be helped by having an awareness of this new facility that's so close by and how it interacts with whatever library or media center facilities they put into the building. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Westlech.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this whole presentation. It's very exciting. Thank you for your comments at the beginning. I am wearing my, I am a new council member hat, and there was a picture in this that made me very excited, and I had no idea about it, under the clara story in the library. What, what is that?
Yeah, it's, so I think from the street, it kind of looks like there's a second floor, but really, it's an elevated portion of the ceiling where the, in the main reading room area, right over all of the Tree Incarnation-made tables, there's a cutout with a bunch of windows that's going to let in, or it already lets in, quite a bit of light, so it keeps the space feeling open and airy and welcoming.
Very cool. And you said it's largely over the, what, the tables, the adult collection kind of tables in the center?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Wonderful. Well, I just want to say thank you, and thank you to the staff. I know Ian, Deputy City Manager Eubanks, Director Jones, like, I know we're still not done, and I'm ready for us to be done. I need us to be done under the, within the contingency, but I know the challenges that you all have had to navigate with the space and with the construction and to be at this point where we actually see shelving is just amazing. I'm so excited about that. And the fact that you opened your presentation by talking about how important to the community having LGBTQ plus literature in our library is one of the main reasons why it is so important that we have our own library, you know? We hear all the time about, well, why can't you just use the county library? Why are you the only ones with a library? That's why. It's because we get to inform what we make available to our community, and we are committed to making sure that the literature in our library represents the diversity of our community, and we have people like you that are committed to moving that forward. So thank you so much for all of the work that you all have been doing, and I am definitely looking forward to that ribbon cutting.
Me too.
All right, so with that, we're going to move to our voting session.
Thank you.
So the first item is the single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for library solar panels. Just want to check with the city management team to see if there are any points of discussion on this item.
Nothing more than what's shared in the memo, Mayor, which we can review if council so desires, but otherwise, we, we would just present kind of the information here and allow you all to ask questions and vote.
Excellent. So would someone like to move the single reading ordinance awarding a contract for installation of solar panels? Councilmember Dibala, I see you. Councilmember Hansak is second. Any points of discussion?
I had one point of discussion, which was just to mention that in a follow-on question to Director McNally, no, no, to Director Braithwaite, she clarified that the panels that are being reinstalled on the building still have 95% of their production capacity. So that's good to know, and it's also something we should be thinking about down the line, that eventually our CIP or facilities fund will need to, you know, be replacing panels that have kind of aged out, I think, but nobody really knows yet for sure how long that takes.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Any other questions? Councilmember Landman.
There was a question pending about what the, whether the city fell within the Maryland or the DC rate of reimbursement for solar or for CO2. Did, did an answer come in for that?
Is that a question that was proposed to, opposed to Director Braithwaite?
I think it was, yeah.
Okay, I don't have that information, but I can get that to you.
Okay, it's not, it's not going to affect my vote, but it was, it would, it would actually be useful to know, because it will affect our income as a city substantially. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing any others?
Okay, all right. So given that this is a single reading ordinance with a clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Landman.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak.
Aye.
Councilmember Westlech.
Aye.
Mayor Circe.
Aye.
All right, just a quick reminder, after you say aye, you have to hit the button, because only so many mics can be turned on at the same time. We're getting there, we're getting there. All right, the next item is the ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter a contract, into a contract with Cigna for dental and health insurance. Does the city management team have any points of discussion on this item?
None, unless you guys have any questions. There's nothing else to add, other than what's written on the, on the staff report.
Okay, excellent. Would someone like to move the ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter a contract with Cigna for health and dental insurance?
Go move.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Any questions or points of discussion?
I had a question.
Go right ahead.
My, the school, the employer I have has Cigna, and they also have an arrangement with a, I don't want to say a broker, kind of like a liaison with Cigna for when employees have issues arise, that they need some help getting resolved. And I wanted to know, I think employees at my organization have found that very helpful, and I wondered whether that is part of the arrangement that you're working out with Cigna. They sort of have someone available to field, kind of like an ombudsman, to field concerns. For example, it became difficult for certain asthma medications to become accessible January of this year, and so they, when they heard that from a few people, then they, they went back to the Cigna management and tried to address how it might be handled.
So we do have a broker, it's USI. They are often involved in addressing or helping employees navigate, but we also have a much better customer service program with Cigna. That's one of the reasons we've selected them.
That's great to know, thanks. I just wanted to make sure employees could, you know, get concerns addressed. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Dibala.
Yeah, I had emailed whether someone could explain for us and for the public just the, the difference between the premium-based insurance, which is what we've had before, where everybody pays a premium and the company handles everything, and this hybrid where some of it is self-funded by the city, and then we get some money back depending on how, what happens in a given year, how many claims there are. So could you just run through that for, for me and everybody else? Thank you.
Sure. So what we have here is it's a hybrid. What that means is we pay a premium, an amount of a certain amount, and then depending on what the premiums, the filing, the claims are, we can get some money back. It's a shared, shared savings. Or if we exceed our amount, then Cigna is on the hook for everything else. So to give you an example, if our premium payment is a million dollars, but our claims are a million five, then Cigna, we only pay up to a million dollars, and Cigna would carry the rest of it. But if our claim is, say, if our, if our cost is, I don't know, $2 million, but we only submit $1 million in claim, then Cigna and us would share that million-dollar difference.
So the, the cost estimating here is for the premium or for the premium plus the share, it probably says? The share of the, of the costs?
So we-
It actually doesn't, it's not really clear.
Sorry about that. So we, the cost is based on the number of subscribers.
Right.
So right now, we're estimating 2.3. If we have more employees, or if we, if more employees fall out, it'll, it'll, it'll be adjusted, but we're estimating about 2.3 right now.
And that's the premium plus our share of the lower end of costs.
The 2.3 is the amount that we're, we're estimating, so if our claims are less than 2.3, then whatever the lesser amount is, we will share that-
Okay.
-between us and Cigna.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you for that explanation. Actually, that helped, because I had read it, but it didn't, it didn't totally compute, but now I think I get it, and I just want, I just wanted, this is just a comment, it sounds like we would be highly motivated to keep everybody on council and who's an employee super healthy, right? Because we get a rebate.
Right.
Just saying. So, you know, time off, low stress, gyms, go for a run, hop on the bicycle, just saying, good food.
Shorter, shorter council meetings. Okay, seeing no more lights, and given this is an ordinance with a clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Landman.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak.
Aye.
Councilmember Westlech.
Aye.
Mayor Circe.
Aye.
Okay, that is our last item for the evening, and so with that, I'm going to call this meeting to adjourn. Everybody, have a great night.